President. The committee continues its scrutiny of the Dutyable Commodities Amendment Bill 2017 and the amendments. Mr. Hauden Chau, Chairman. Yesterday, I already spelled out my views on the amendments. There are two groups. The first group of amendments is about the exclusion of delivery worker from the regulation regime because we want to regulate the behavior of seller and not the delivery worker. So this group of amendments would examine the delivery workers. Of course, I support this group of amendments. And there's a second group, which is the crucial part of the CSA, and that is law enforcement officers would be empowered under the amendment to enter domestic premises to conduct a search. I have already said that I do not agree with this proposed amendment because the offense we are talking about is not very serious. If we allow law enforcement officers to enter domestic premises to collect evidence on the strength of a warrant issued by a magistrate, I would argue that it's disproportionate to the offense involved. If we were to talk about drug trafficking or anti-terrorism offenses, then it would be more appropriate for empowering an inspector to enter domestic premises to collect evidence. But here we're talking about just the prohibition of selling or supplying liquor to minors. It's a relatively not so serious offense. If we allow entry into domestic premises to collect evidence, I would say this is not there's a lack of proportionality and therefore inappropriate. Yesterday, I heard from some members here. There are arguments. This bill is about regulating the behavior of a seller of liquor, and we want that, want shops with refrain from selling liquor to minors. And the major target of the legislative-controlled regime is the retailer, the shops. And we have to consider the enforcement action to be taken. For example, do we have sufficient manpower? Do we have undercover operations to to check these shops and whether the operation hours of the law enforcement officers will be good enough to cover the key periods? So very obviously, we want to target shops in our streets. But now with this amendment, we are trying to target domestic premises, private homes. Honestly, they are not what we want to target under this bill. But now the power is extended to cover domestic premises. In this way, we would lose the focus intended under this bill. I think we should mainly focus on the regulation of shops in our streets. Yesterday, some members commented on online shopping. According to the Bureau, if we do not cover domestic premises, then many buying-selling of liquor will take place at domestic premises. Chairman, with due respect, I cannot agree with such arguments. Domestic premises are for domestic purposes. Even the lease was specified, that is, for residential uses. So the residential premises or domestic premises should not be used for business activities. So even if there are such activities, what is the scale of such business or activities? Is it that with the bill enacted that many domestic premises will be converted into business premises for selling of liquor? I wonder whether it would be the case. But now, in one goal, we would extend, we empower the officers to enter domestic premises to collect evidence. That, in my view, is a hasty move because that would be doing something drastic without evidence. If after a review is conducted after some time and is discovered that many domestic premises are used for selling of liquor and even selling of liquor, supplying liquor to minors, then if that's the situation we face, then I would not disagree that the power be extended to cover domestic premises. But now, at this stage, if you suggest that we have to incorporate the second group of amendments as well to cover the search of domestic premises, I would say it's not appropriate. So I'm afraid I cannot support the second group of amendment. I hope the Bureau would listen to us because we do attach a lot of importance to proportionality. If we just brush it aside and the power to collect evidence is extended in such a casual way, then it's not something good in terms of the legislative work and the scope of our laws. Chairman, I cannot support the second group of amendment, so I submit. Mrs. Regina Yip.
Chairman, although members from the New People's Party did not participate in the work of the Bills Committee, but we have been paying attention to this bill, we noticed that when Mr. Yu Cieh Wang spoke, he already set out the deliberation of the Bills Committee. When the Exco approved the bill to be tabled, it would only cover public places. And then subsequently, DOJ's lawyers thought that that would present a big loophole, and that's why they have come up with a solution to cover distribution points and domestic premises. And I note that some members have said that if we allow the entry into domestic premises is disproportionate. But I beg to differ here because based on my experience in law enforcement, entry into domestic premises is allowed under many pieces of legislation, sometimes even without a warrant. And here, a warrant from a magistrate is required under the bill. I believe that's sufficient safeguard, and it will not cause confusion. Drinking by minors under 18 is a problem. Since we have removed the duty on wine, drinking is popular. If you go to Aljin Street, High Street, or the Pomona near the Western District, there are many bars patronized by a lot of young people, but they have to be licensed, and the licensees are not allowed to sell liquor to those under 18. When I was abroad, I noticed that drinking among the young people was a particularly serious issue. And they thought it would be important to reduce alcohol consumption. In universities, many students died from, from some time we heard about students who die from binge drinking. So to protect our young people from their lives and to protect their health, since it's harmful to young people to drink. So we should not allow the domestic premises to be used for the sale of liquor. Although you may argue that this is not in line with the land lease. Well, we have many instances of breach of land lease, such as the link, the breaching the lease of their premises. What the government can do is to enter an entry in the land registry, and that's all. So in my view, we should support this amendment, which require a warrant to be issued by the magistrate before entry. The New People's Party's member will support the amendment.
Dr. Lu Wei Kuo. BPA members and I would support the bill. The legislative intent is clear. It's about 109B, cap 109A, and 109. It would prohibit the selling of liquor from vending machines, and also the prohibition of the sale and supply of intoxicating liquor to minors in the course of business. And also to impose a requirement on seller to, or the seller to display or publish a prescribed notice. I don't think anyone would argue that these are not right. Some members have already suggested that in Hong Kong, young people are getting more and more fond of drinking. It's a question of prevailing the social culture, and we should pay attention to this phenomenon. The Secretary has proposed two groups of amendments. One of the amendments aims at specifying that a person delivering intoxicating liquor in the course of business for another person who sells or supplies liquor will not be regarded as selling or supplying the liquor, thus not subject to the new regulatory regime, provided that the person is not employed by the seller or supplier, nor involved in the sale or supply of the liquor. So we are talking about the courier company or the delivery company just executing an order to deliver the goods. It's really questionable whether they should be caught by this prohibition. Another one is to replace public place with distribution point so as to specify the areas where inspectors may exercise their powers. BPA members and I basically support the first group of amendments. However, for the second group of amendments, in these two days, there has been rather controversial.
Here, the CSA is to add new Regulation 44 so that if a magistrate is satisfied by certain conditions, then the search warrant could be issued to collect evidence in domestic premises. Now, the immediate reaction from the public on reading such a clause is that this is a great disturbance to the public. Now, we're talking about people selling liquor to minors in home. We haven't seen that happening. Okay, we want a law to be absolutely watertight without any loopholes. And in that case, I have to quote what Mr. Hauden Chau said, proportionality. Now, this is a well-intended piece of legislation, but then at the end, the public consider it a huge disturbance, then it will be counterproductive. That's why BPA colleagues and I would not support the second group of amendments. As members of this legislature, of course, we fully appreciate importance of legislative work, and that's squarely our duty. But we often hear this, when a piece of legislation is enacted, and there's always a downside. Now, but if we don't legislate just because there may be a downside, then it's not right either. So when we draft legislation, we have to give it thorough consideration. We also have to have regard to the actual circumstances in society. And then we could minimize the drawbacks of any laws. But of course, it's not right to not legislate just because we're worried about the drawbacks. So it's necessary to strike the right balance and consider proportionality. Chairman, now, there is this saying from Menches, that if you don't use compass, you cannot draw circles or squares. So we have to have rules to make sure order is kept, and rulers must have virtues for them to rule the world. Now, I am an engineer. I know definitely the importance of the compass and other tools. Otherwise, we cannot draw circles or squares. In society, the most authoritative rules are, of course, the constitution of the country. And in Hong Kong, the basic law is the rule we go by, and we have also other pieces of legislation and regulations. Now, when we're young, we often hear the word rule because adults would always tell us, you have to observe the rule. Alcohol is for adult consumption, not children. So that's an important rule to follow. So when you grow up, then you can drink. In schools, teachers also tell students to follow the rules. So rules are not entirely dependent on laws. Home education, school education, and customs and practices formed in society are all rules that we are expected to follow. So when we legislate, we must also educate so the public follow rules and ethics. Now, Menches also said, if we just rely on goodwill, that's not enough to govern. If we rely just on laws alone, it's not also enough. So the purpose of this bill is right. But at the same time, we need to listen to the words of wisdom of our ancestors. We cannot just rely on laws alone to keep people, to keep order. Now, Chairman, you and I grew up in the same era in Hong Kong. At the time, things were much simpler. There was not the need to legislate against selling liquor to minors. At the time, probably even minors helped with housework. Most children were from grassroots families, and there's a saying that poor children learn to run the family at an early age. Now, for young, for children, we probably went to grocery stores to help buy rice, other groceries. Now, Chairman, you and I love food. We know that for grazing brief, we need certain kind of wine. As for pork, we can, we need to add spices and a bit of rose wine, and then the meat would be perfect. So in those days, children helped with grocery shopping. At the time, probably there won't be a ban on what children could buy. But then, things are a lot more complicated now in society. There are people who exploit loopholes for their personal gains. So I mentioned what children did in those days, but it doesn't mean that we have to do exactly the same now because things have become a lot more complicated in society these days. So apart from legislation, education is important, and the biggest principle is that we must all observe the laws and rules. Now, if there are people who breach the law and disrupt law and order, of course, we cannot endorse such behavior. Now, I must stress again, BPA and I support this bill, but we do not support the second group of amendments. So I submit.
Mr. Wong Ting Kwong. Thank you, Chairman. For the Dutyable Commodities Amendment Bill 2017, it regulates the sale of intoxicating liquor to minors in the course of business. Personally, I think this bill should be supported, but for the second group of amendment, that is clause seven amendment, I think that requires more discussion. Now, with advancements in society, there have been drastic changes in channels of sales. Now, when I was a child, there was no internet, of course. So there was no such thing as e-trade. Now, things have changed much. You can do business from home, or you can buy online anytime. It's really convenient. But we have to consider this for minors, i.e. those under 18. If they shop online for alcohol, how likely is that? Now, nothing is absolute. There may be young children or young people who start drinking before they reach 18. And they may, of course, then buy alcohol. Now, we're talking about entering someone's home, i.e. domestic premises, to collect evidence. So let's picture what that scenario is like. Is there a need to do so? And does it make sense? First of all, keeping of liquor. Now, I keep liquor at home. Now, of course, I can't sell it from home because at home you can't conduct a business. So I keep liquor at home. I don't know for what purpose. It's not against the law if I just keep liquor at home. And now, another scenario. Let's say there is a minor at home drinking. Is that against law? Well, drinking is not against law either. Of course, you should educate him or her not to drink. So under what circumstances, when an act is against law, that's buying liquor? Of course, you can't sell, but also you can't buy liquor. I'm talking about minor. Now, amendment to clause 77. If there is such an act, could it be caught red-handed? Compared to possession of dangerous drugs or other prohibited substances, it is a different case. Let's say I come to your home, and I find that you keep, you know, dangerous drugs or prohibited substances. I could immediately arrest you. But if I keep alcohol at home, it is not against the law. So therefore, there is doubt about the necessity of entering people's home for searching. And this could cause disturbance to the public. Now, when we consider a piece of legislation, more importantly, we have to consider how we can enforce it. I understand that the Bills Committee, there's discussion that if we enter a home, it's possible that we could seize transaction records. But transaction records, do they mean that, do we mean that they will contain someone's name, address, and so on? Because transaction records may not be complete. And if you do not have the information, what is the point if you seize such records? How does it help? Or if someone has used a credit card, well, then we will know. But then, I'm really baffled. Why do we, how would they know? Because for someone under 18, they cannot apply for a credit card. If someone can use a credit card that shows he's 18, and of course, it's lawful. If someone can use a credit card that shows he's uh eighteen, and of course it's lawful then for him or her to buy liquor. Yeah, but of course, it's outside the scope of this amendment, but anyway. Okay, you you uh you say you may be able to see some credit card records. Again, uh I don't get the logic. How would it help?
Therefore. What can we achieve by entering domestic premises for searches? How does it help with law enforcement? How effective will that be? Whether it is the D A B or myself. In this process of legislation, we have acted with caution. We have been attending to this task in a serious attitude. And we have been availing ourselves to the objective reality and actual operations. I of course understand that the administration is doing this to facilitate law enforcement. However. We should put between quotes. The better enforcement of the law. You should not enforce the law arbitrarily, as many members were saying, like Doctor Loai Kwok. Children may help with housework. And if you apply the law in a severe manner. You are asking for the impossible. We need to. Educate the children and it is a good sign that they are helping with housework. However, if by so doing they step into a trap and break the law, well, that is something quite unimaginable. We should encourage children to help with housework, so they help parents and the elderly. To children. This is some very good conduct we want to see in them and this is very moralistic. However. We believe clause seven is counterproductive. It will bring about negative impact to society. I support the bill as a whole, but. We need to really give very serious consideration to clause seven. For now, I object to it. I believe the Bureau is aware of this, otherwise they would not have singled this out as another group of amendments. I hope the Bureau will act in tandem with. The common views of members here. We should instead good give, uh give good education and foster a good social environment. Thank you. Mister Stephen Ho, thank you Chairman. I heard Mister Hodin Chow with Doctor Loai Kwok and Mister Wong Ting Kwan and. They remind me of the time when I was young and studying in Britain. I was a bartender at a bar and I sold beer to customers. Usually by eleven P M, nobody could sell any liquor even at supermarkets because. There would be cordon lines which would be mounted. And even if someone took away a bottle of beer, it should have been opened. And they could not take it away with the lid on. And now it's ten years down the road from when I was in Britain and I think it's a little late. Also, when I was young, I. Lived in a housing estate and a neighbor, an elderly neighbor. Would tell me, Stephen, go get me a packet of cigarettes from a store. And of course, that could have an impact on children if at very young they were told to buy liquor or tobacco. Therefore, we should tackle this issue, but we should start with education. Now we are talking about sale of liquor. The thing is, even if they can't buy liquor. They could be given liquor by parents at a young age and they might grow to like it. Even if clause seven is supported. Minors can still find their way to liquor. As members were saying, whether we should give the power to the F E H D to apply for a search warrant. To go into domestic premises for gathering of evidence. We try to simulate different scenarios when we scrutinize the law. When F E H D inspectors apply for. Search warrants, what would they do at the domestic premises? And we were told that they could ask for I D. And they could see how much wine is stored, but they could not arrest anybody. So whether or not we give you the power, I don't think it makes a big difference. The only thing is, as mentioned by Mister Wong Ting Kwan, whether there could be transaction records. Using credit cards, but people under eighteen can hardly get a credit card. However, maybe the administration is forward-looking because yesterday Mister Ben Chan said. If you were eating at a cook food stall, people might say, okay, you pay here and then you go to the door next. Uh the store next door to get a bottle of beer, because now we are in the electronic payment age. I can't buy liquor here, but then I can scan a Q R code next door and then I would be able to. Get beer. So is it that the administration is really that forward-looking? And they're anticipating what would happen in the electronic payment age. However, that is not evident in the bill as it is drafted. When the administration proposes this amendment, I don't exactly know why they are doing this. Are they trying to get the power so that they might be able to use it in future, just in case? However, when we make a law to authorize the government or civil servants to do something. We have to be very cautious and we must guard against abuse. Of course, even if this is passed, you have to apply for a search warrant. But Mister Hodin Chow has told us that in ninety nine point nine percent of the cases. You will be given a search warrant upon application. But of course, you also need to show the court sufficient evidence before you can make the application and. You will have to do a good job before you go to the court. I don't understand court operations very well, but. In terms of the apply, application for a search warrant with the support of evidence and also. The court's uh permission for you to enter domestic premises. I believe the administration has to explain very much in detail. I believe you are not envisaging what would happen in the electronic payment age. And maybe you just want the power and maybe for other reasons, but you have not made yourself clear. If that's the case, the D A B and other members might not want to give you that power. But maybe it's because you have not explained yourself um in detail and that is why this is not the. Right time for we to do it. Perhaps, one year or two years after the bill is passed, you can come back for a review. To see if anyone is using this loophole, so they pay with WeChat or Alipay. I don't remember which one, what what's that? There are other payment methods. There are over ten such electronic payment methods. Maybe people could use those loopholes and you must uh watch the situation. Mister Wong always discusses business issues with me. Hong Kong businessmen are smart. Our laws, of course, are comprehensive, but they can always look for loopholes in the laws. I was selling beer, as I said. You could buy beer, but I could also ask you to have all the lids removed. And as Mister Wong Ting Kwan was saying, the cook food stall might not sell wine, but you can pay there and then you can get. The liquor in the store in another street. So perhaps we should allow the bill to be implemented, so we know whether that is a loophole. I believe you won't get majority support for this amendment this time around, but it doesn't mean. That your original intent for seeking that power is wrong. It's just that maybe you do not have sufficient grounds. I hope you can take it back in future when you have sufficient grounds. I'm not saying you are abusing your power. Yet we are only dealing with the sale of liquor to minors and we don't want to open that other door for you. I hope you will now understand that members' concerns are really. Um issued from the public's perspective. I hope you will be very careful with the drafting of laws. Thank you, Mister Ray Chan.
Thank you Chairman. There are two themes in this present amendment. One is to. Target delivery, delivery workers who deliver liquor. To purchasers who shop online. I'm trying to add to that. If the delivery workers are not directly employed by the sellers or companies. If they are staff of courier companies, they will not be held liable. Of course, I would support that. Extending the liability to delivery workers. Will be extremely difficult to implement. I hope the administration will explain more clearly. Let us not talk about advances in technology. Let us talk about the traditional kind of food delivery. Okay, you call up a restaurant. You order a meal plus two beers. The person receiving the call, well, will that person have to ask whether you are a miner? As in remote distribution, because you are also asking for beers, and then the caller will say, yes. Do you give guidelines now to restaurants? Because remote distribution should include um take out orders. On the internet, you ask people to click, so there will be a record, but what about placing an order? For food on the phone? Do you want an audio taping of that conversation? And then, okay, upon delivery, say that worker is directly employed by the restaurant. Would the delivery worker be responsible to ask the person placing the order? To accept the order and show a proof of identity? If it is a miner, then the two beers should be taken away instead of delivering them? Have you issued guidelines? Will you issue guidelines that the delivery worker? Should check for proof of identity if the food order includes beers? Or is it that beer or wine cannot be ordered for delivery? As you know. Sometimes when people deliver a food order, they. May not have the door or gate opened for them. People might even hand out a hundred dollar note. Um through the gate and they would just leave the food outside the house. That happens. And also Mister Tommy Chou, I wonder if you have looked into this. There are mobile applications for ordering food. And then uh you will be able to search for a restaurant in your vicinity and then you can place orders. And then the people at the restaurant just don't care who is the customer. The mobile app is the go-between and the order is taken actually by the mobile app. And the mobile app company will actually be delivering the food to the purchaser. Of course, the app is not employed by the restaurant, so it doesn't have any liability.
Uh is this understanding correct? I'm not suggesting that next time you amend the law, you have to cover the uh. Operator offering the app. Uh that would be just too much. You want to regulate convenience stores, a restaurant, but do you want to also regulate the go-between? Uh offering the service with an app, with a mobile app? Or are you going to regulate the sale of liquor uh to minors? Through the media of a mobile app? Now, of course, the delivery worker is not directly employed by the seller. And he is uh exempted. And that's the question of whether we can ask for id- age, age proof of age. If it's an online shopping, but of course, their credit cards are held by minors and there are also debit cards. Or if it's a cash on delivery basis. Uh well, when the order is placed, there's no need to present one's I D. I'm not, I'm may, only talking about uh remote distribution. If it's done at the shop, of course, you can have a camera uh to identify the the buyer. If the delivery worker has to do the the check, then the employer, the seller will have to in. Instruct the worker how to go about it. It's even more difficult. Although there may be uh uh operational problems, you may might not have thought through all the problems. So, but it's okay to support the exemption granted to courier companies. On the question of empowering inspectors to enter domestic premises. Uh one or two members have uh supported the government, but I would say that their arguments are not really sound. It's said by Mrs Regina Ye that under other laws. Uh entry into domestic premises is allowed even without a warrant. Of course, that's true, but we are now talking about the proportionality. We have to weigh uh. The seriousness of the offense against the power to be granted. We are talking about selling of liquor to minors here. If someone is selling liquor in a domestic. Premises is already against the law. There will be other laws that you, uh the authorities can invoke. To enter the domestic premises. So there's no proportionality, uh there there's no necessity. And what about feasibility? Uh it it, alright, you enter the premises, you see the liquor, you see money, you see uh minors. But what does it mean? Unless you see the transaction going on or records of transaction are kept. If there are records kept, you can prosecute on 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 other grounds, based on other grounds. For example, books are kept. On the transaction records and uh some of the entries uh. Tell you that the buyer was a miner, then you can prosecute. So is it really feasible? Uh Mister Stephen Ho said, uh at first, we thought. Uh Mister Stephen Ho said at first, we thought it, it would be okay, it would not be very harmful to grant this power. Uh it's not something that uh cannot be collected later. And I hope a pan-democrat would not speculate on the motive of Mister Houghton Charles's arguments. Let's just look at whether the arguments are good or not. Uh when we talk about police uh power or powers enjoyed by other authorities, uh we should just give them sufficient powers, nothing more. And even without this power, uh the authority can deal with the problem of uh selling liquor at domestic premises. If I give you any uh information that uh someone is selling liquor inside domestic premises, you can prosecute on the basis of selling with liquor without license. So there are sufficient powers enjoyed by law enforcement agencies to tackle selling of liquor. So I submit. Uh Mister Tommy Chou.
Chairman, once again, I want to say something about uh delivery workers. Do they know? I have received uh uh an inquiry about liquor license. Liquor license covers uh designated uh premises. If I buy a, a, a glass of wine in a bar and I step outside the premises to drink it. Uh the drink, the drinker, the customer is okay, but the licensee will be in breach of the law of the license. I handled a case recently. It's a, it involves people using an, an online platform to order uh bum apple pie bum, pineapple bum plus a beer. And then uh the prosecution is based on the sale of uh bottled beer together with food to be consumed outside the premises. This is how prosecution is initiated against the licensee. I advise the licensee to appeal. Uh I don't think that's the policy intent of the original liquor licensing uh system. I don't know which department or whether the FHD has got the manpower, the these inspectors they need to enforce the law. Actually, liquor license, liquor licensing is enforced by the police, whether regular or auxiliary police, to see if the licensing conditions are complied with. And usually, uh the objector in the lic- liquor license application is the police. We have seen bars on upper floors of buildings and also discos as well. If the requirements are too strict, they will not apply for a, a license. And then you have to carry out uh raids and inspections. Uh they can ask another undercover police to order liquor. And if the order is taken, then they can seize everything for, from liquor, uh hi-fi and, and P A system as well as the refrigerator and liquor. Some members said, yes, it's allowed under other laws. Of course, if you in uh cover vice establishments, illegal gambling establishments, and you, and if you have to apply a warrant and no one opens the door for you and then you have to the force forcibly enter the premises. And then you see nothing but the, the gambling, the equipment. But you can, should not apply the, the whole, uh the whole system applicable under other laws to this particular bill. The police or other law enforcement agencies should not be allowed to apply the same system to regulate vice establishments, for example, to this particular new regulation regime. And we are talking about selling of liquor to minors. It's not difficult to apply for a warrant because they would have a bona fide belief that there are, there's liquor stored there for the purpose of uh supplying the liquor to minors and the court can issue a warrant. And when you enter, you see a couple having a meal or enjoying a, a beer. Maybe there's an underage child not consuming liquor at the time. What can you do? How much evidence do you have to, to support a prosecution? Although you have successfully entered the domestic premises, what can you do? Unless you, you, you can uh catch the transaction on the spot. Or for that, you need to have an undercover operation. And if, if that's the case, you don't need a search warrant. So what, what happened? If you just enter and see nothing happening, unless you can seize duty not paid commodities such as uh liquor. Well, I've heard that the Democratic Party members would support this amendment. I would like to hear from them, their uh grounds. And uh in, in the past, they supported the, an legislative amendment saying that the police could search someone for, for the purpose to uh of finding if there's any uh cigarette packet on the body. But it's not against the law to possess uh tobacco. So because the government also collects a duty from the sale of tobacco. So why do you want to allow the police to conduct a search on, on that ground? Maybe the police think that this fat fellow is uh is not really a, looking like a good, good guy and I want to search him. So why do we want to apply the tobacco control regime to this particular problem of liquor? I don't know whether it's the DOJ uh which is the responsible for drafting the bill. It seems that they are uh trying to the concoct something by picking various uh provisions from other laws. I don't think we should accept anything like this. Uh does any other member wish to speak? Uh Doctor Elizabeth Quo.
Thank you, Chairman. Like many members, I support the bill. Because we know that consumption of alcohol could lead to cancers and, um diabetes, cardiovascular disease and many other diseases. And also alcohol affects the development of the brains of young people. Now since there's no more duty on wine, i- it's true there are more people drinking now. And people think it's a trendy thing to drink. Now, uh young people in the past would just maybe have a beer or two every now and then, but now they uh want to taste wine. So drinking uh seems rather common now among young people. But for the underage, drinking affects the development of the brains, the memory and the central nervous systems and even their self-control. Now, I have um witnessed how alcohol caused tragedy. One year, the International IT Group had a meeting in Croatia. It was an international conference. And there was someone from Brazil, a young entrepreneur and successful too. His company has only made, has just made a huge profit. Just the day before, we were still chatting, having a drink. Uh we even rode horses there and then we were talking about um the uh what directions of technological developments. Perhaps he was too excited. Uh that night, everyone, a lot, a big group went to drink and many were drunk. And for this Brazilian friend, he was definitely under the influence of alcohol. He went to the sea. And he suddenly, he said he wanted to go swimming. Nobody could stop him. And he just jumped from the, uh the cliff into this, uh jumped from the seaside into the water, but it so happened, it was a shallow end. And then when he jumped into sea, his, he broke his neck. He was seriously injured. Of course, he was sent immediately to hospital. Since then, he became paralyzed from the neck down. And he's still in this state now. And this is my friend. So it's my I witnessed that. And every time I thought about the day before, we were still chatting, riding horses. He was a fine young man. And then the next day, the world changed for him. He fell from paradise into hell. Of course, we still keep in touch with him via the internet. Uh even though he's in this state, he remains passionate about how he could use technology to help paralyzed people to communicate with others. Anyway, this was the uh some story that I witnessed. It's really tragic. And so we know alcohol could do much harm and we must gas against it. So we can see that for alcohol does affect someone's self-control ability. I've heard that um alcohol messes with your mind and if people drink and drive, that's led to many traffic accidents. So if people start drinking at too young an age, it will affect their developments, their self-discipline and their self-control ability. That's why the World Health Organization has long suggested that there should be legislation around the world to ban young people under eighteen from drinking. And Hong Kong, well, actually many other countries, um there's already legislation to ban young people from drinking, but in Hong Kong, uh in, it's only in licensed premises, i.e. bars and restaurants where sale of alcohol to minors is prohibited. But then anywhere else, um a seven eleven or any, from any shops or even uh with online shopping, young people could buy any amount of liquor they want. So this is something we need to tackle and we should have tackled it much sooner, earlier. So that's why I support this bill. Now, we would just rely on the retail sector to um voluntarily refrain from selling liquor to minors. It may not be much effective. And it doesn't bode well for society. So for our, uh well-being, um we should legislate to prevent young people from buying alcohol. If not altogether, at least not so easily. And now for retail shops and online shops, at least now they would not so casually sell liquor to young people. More importantly, I hope this piece of legislation will arouse public attention. So parents. Doctor Quo, we are now on clause seven. Please come back to that. Yes, I know that, Chairman, I'm coming to that. So after the bill is passed into law, I hope the government will step up publicity and education effort. We should appeal to young people not to drink. At the same time, we should appeal to parents to prevent the children from getting into contact with alcohol. Now for the um two groups of amendments, I don't think um we have any objection or any of us has any objection to, to uh to group one amendments. Because we need to exempt couriers or um people delivering takeouts and so on. Otherwise, they would not have ease of mind. Now for the um employees, they only responsible for doing the deliveries. They don't know what's inside and they don't know how old the person taking the delivery is. And it's not possible for you to demand to see someone's ID card. So under the circumstances, if they are ex- uh exempted from criminal liability, it is only right. For group two amendment, it's about empowering inspectors of the Department of Health to enter people's homes to collect evidence. Now, I'm rather baffled by this amendment. I have yet to be convinced and my party has yet to be convinced to accept this amendment. We haven't heard a, a strong case yet. Now, first of all, it's about necessity. Is it necessary? If there are people who sell liquor to minors from domestic premises, that's already against the law. And if someone blatantly does that and then is reported, is it still difficult to apply for a search warrant? No, I don't think so. And what if someone um secretly sell alcohol to minors from um domestic premises? Then is it really so difficult to collect enough evidence for you to arrest someone? I would imagine it'd be difficult. Because as some, some colleagues mentioned, uh it's not uncommon for uh there to be liquor in, in a home and it's not uncommon for there to be a minor or minors in the home. And how can you prove that liquor is being sold to minors unless you catch them in the process of transaction? If it's not um a covert operation, how do you catch someone red-handed? And if it's a covert operation already, you're inside the, the domestic premises. So really, I don't get it. Why there's a need to move this amendment and allow colleagues of the uh F H D to enter someone's homes, uh someone's home to collect evidence? Now, for entry into domestic premises, it has to do with some serious crimes. That's what the publics would think. And so if we have this amendment, um it may cause concerns to the public. People may question why there is the need for this amendment because it seems there is not the necessity. And then there will be huge problems in enforcement too. So I hope the government will consider this again carefully. So I hope the government will consider this again carefully. And see if this amendment is really needed. This time round, I cannot support this amendment. Now, if the government goes back and considers further, and if you have convincing case or if there are actual cases. To tell us that if there is not this power, you're not able to do your job, well then. This council could consider this further. As I said earlier, after this bill is passed into law, the government should do more in publicity and education. Now, uh at restaurants, I've seen, say, a big group having meals. And adults might say, well, just let the child get a taste of of alcohol, it's fine, it doesn't matter. So we see this happening. Uh, and there are adults who still do not see the harm of alcohol. Especially to uh the developments of children and young people. So it's the same with gambling. We try to um lobby against gambling. We face um the problem that adults just don't get it. Uh, and they say, well, if they ask, say, uh children, young children to just um standing for them at the march on table. Or just play uh poker, whatever, it doesn't matter. There's no harm in that, but. It's just the same, you know, and then children may become interested in that activity. And, you know, with addiction, usually it's the um um state of mind that you want to. Run away from something. So with alcohol or gambling and so on, it's possible because when you are young, you have tried it, gambling or or liquor. And then when you're under much pressure, when you try to run away from reality, then. You uh want to look for this um um feeling. And so you could escape from reality. You know, with uh alcohol in particular, you become intoxicated, um in and and tipsy. And it is, you could easily become addicted to it. Now, when we talk about addiction or kicking an addiction, we're talking mostly about um kicking a drug habit. We have always emphasized the harm of drugs to people, so we've done a lot of publicity and education. To appeal to young people not to take drugs, but when it comes to uh liquor, we haven't done enough. So it seems that underage drink or drinking or drinking among young people is rather common. But though, uh just because we don't realize that alcohol could also harm our young people much. So in terms of publicity and education, the government should do more and better. In particular, you must appeal to parents to uh see the harm of alcohol to. Young people. Now, it's like appealing to young people not to gamble or to take drugs. This whole community, parents and adults all have the duty to uh help young people in that respect. We um must appeal to young people not to take drugs, you must also appeal to young people not to drink or gamble, thank you. Does any other member wish to speak? Mister um Michael. Uh, Mr. Wilson All, sorry.
Now, um the s- secretary. Would like us to pass this bill today. For the first group of amendments, I have no objection. But um for the amendment that allows inspectors to collect evidence. In someone's home with a magistrate's search warrant, I have reservations about that. Now, if inspectors don't have the powers to apply for search warrants, the secretary said, then. Criminal elements may sell liquor to the underage. And domestic premises may become a hotbed for the sale of alcohol, and then enforcement will be made difficult.
But I would question the process. Okay, I may grant you a search warrant to go into domestic premises, but what can you do? I think this is the point that has been repeatedly made by members in this debate over these two days. But the Bureau has not come up with something definite to let us know how you would actually handle this. Well, if the following scenario ensues, and that is you need a search warrant to go into domestic premises. But in the end, you have to collect evidence. However, if you can't. Collect enough evidence to show that a crime has been committed, then you are complicating matters and. Privacy might be infringed upon. I just can't think through this. I have been listening to members, well, from application to entry. What are the standards to go by? There may be adults and minors in the house, and there is wine. Now, how will you interpret the interaction between these elements? And also like to make use of an example to illustrate to the Bureau Secretary. And I like to talk about the Tobacco Control Office. To be fair, we always see TCO people enforcing the law. However, in the end, when they get into some premises. People will announce that the TCO is here and everybody will flee and they will arrest nobody. So in this case, you can get the search warrant, but how can you gather evidence in domestic premises? I can't think this through. There are many queries about our operation that have not been explained. And these operational difficulties will attract criticism from society. Secretary, I'd like to tell you that we need to be very cautious when we approach this piece of legislation. Many people are watching this live broadcast, and they want to know how members are tackling this point of. Um, searching domestic premises and whether we represent the views. Last night, somebody said to me that. He would agree with the first group of amendments, but he also said if. Indeed, there could be the search of domestic premises, how could this be done? How could we monitor remote distribution? Mister Wong Ting Kung was talking about evidence. It's very difficult to collect the right kind of evidence and. He talked about records. Many members of the public are questioning this so-called searching domestic premises. Secretary, I hope you will give us a hand. Our viewpoint is that after the Ledgeco discusses policies and when they are actually implemented. Very often, the public still don't understand it or they don't sympathize with your stance. To be fair, you need to do public education and publicity, not just about this motion. But when you introduce. Or when you introduced new policies in the past, you were criticized by the public. And Secretary, I'm asking you to step up public education and publicity because that helps. Don't think that you can just. Or broadcast APA eyes and maybe you think that is not effective, but I would say that you. Certainly can do continuous publicity or be it bit by bit, and it helps. I think the administration has been very um prudent in tackling this piece of legislation and. You deserve a like, and it is appreciated. But I must beg your pardon for not supporting this group of amendments because we are not convinced. That really you need the power. Apart from promising that you would step up publicity in the days to come. You should also allow us to know what will actually happen on the ground when people go in premises to search. Um, to let us know that indeed you believe you can collect evidence when you go into domestic premises. You know, you need, you need to apply for a search warrant, you need to go through a lot of processes, and yet if. The effort doesn't bear fruit, it's a waste of time and energy. I also hope the secretary can let us know what the operation will be like and how she could. Response to, respond to public queries. And Chairman, I'd like also to say that it is a common concern in society. That we should not sell liquor to minors. It is the government's responsibility to do a good gatekeeping work. But the sector has been doing it voluntarily over the years, and I think that has been effective. It depends on your individual view whether the effect is good enough. We have been in contact with young people and also parents and children. They share the same viewpoint, and that is, you need to tell me. How you are going to do publicity and education, or else there is no common ground for discussion. So I'm taking the opportunity today to tell the secretary that she should double her efforts in this regard. And don't let the public think that you are doing it just for the sake of doing it and that there will be no particular effect. And you may be. Doing something good with bad intentions. Therefore, Chairman, I will support the first group. But for the second group, when I am not given all the data and justifications. I may uh find it hard to support the second group. That is also true for DAB colleagues here. Thank you, Mister Leng Chi Chum. Thank you, Chairman. We are debating the twenty seventeen Dutyable Commodities Amendment Bill. We are debating CSA's proposed by the administration. I think we should debate this. Just now, Mister Wilson All said that the DAB will support the first group of amendments. But as for the second group, the power to allow inspectors to search domestic premises. This one we cannot support. Now. We are. Extending the ban of sale of liquor to minors. This represents a big departure from existing laws. At present, the law only regulates the sale of liquor at licensed premises. But not at selling points. The administration is extending this to the sale process. It has sparked controversy, and that is. How can you prove that the purchaser is above eighteen? I was not a member of the bill's committee, but I read the papers. And members of the bill's committee raised different views. In effect, some shops will suffer losses. I sympathize with these shops. But according to the WHO. Intoxicating liquor harms the body and it is equal to carcinogens. If this is so serious, why don't you put it on a par with tobacco to stick a health warning? On wine bottles to say drinking is bad for your health. You should include that health warning. Otherwise. The administration may say that alcoholic beverages are classified as a group one carcinogen by the WHO. Because it um affects the development, developing brain in adolescence. Including impairing the memory and affecting the development of the nervous system, as well as reducing self-control ability. But how come when someone is eighteen, it, he is not harmed anymore? I don't know whether the secretary drinks, but I don't really drink. And does it mean that people who drink are necessarily unhealthy? I don't, I think Mister Tommy Chung would disagree because. His constituency wants to promote drinking. Because otherwise, the sector will be affected. As for laws regulating the sale of liquor to minors, I think there are controversies, but overall speaking. We can accept it because. There has been regulation of alcohol all along, we are just extending it to selling points. This is in line with the spirit of making legislation. And as for the new scope of regulation. How can we protect minors so they will not be inadvertently entrapped by the law? I can give you an example, because in the districts, I have observed that. Places that sell liquor and places where people can drink liquor are separated, and so the police cannot enforce the law. At a twenty-four-hour store, I can buy a bottle of wine and I drink that in a small restaurant. The restaurant does not store or keep alcohol, and the police can do nothing. So people are circumventing the law. But society is evolving. People can always outwit the government, okay, you make laws. But I can circumvent it. I don't need a license, even if people can drink at my premises. With this bill, these people may be regulated. What is it? Uh mainly the minors, but. When liquor is sold, they will have to abide by certain regulations. This is worthy of our support. And our colleagues have already commented a lot on the other part. Let me also say something. The law has regulated licensed premises. When the police enforce the law. They will see whether alcohol is kept at the premises as allowed by the license. Without the license, you cannot keep alcohol. The administration is explaining that there are upstairs bars. People are operating bars on the twentieth or thirtieth floors of domestic buildings. Mister Tommy Jung said it plainly. When the police come in, people could see them coming in on CCTV and they would all flee before the police. Are at the scene, even if you have a search warrant, it doesn't help. So the administration has seen this happening. But we have not been shown figures to show that it is commonplace or serious. And now we have this bill. That inspectors can get a search warrant to go into domestic premises to search for wine. As Mister Tommy Jung said, people may buy a lot of alcohol and store it at home. I also do that, but not. Um, in a big amount. And if there is a minor at the scene, you can arrest people. Because there is a minor and alcohol. I think this is very controversial. Especially, we are now only regulating licensed premises, but now you extend it to domestic premises. And even if it is not operating as any kind of venture, you can still go into that. And I think that's a big departure from the spirit of the law, and it is very unacceptable to me. I will not support this amendment. I hope you will conduct another review, and you have to show us harder evidence to show that this is very commonplace, that people are operating private sellers at home. Now we have private kitchens, but you have to show us that this is commonplace.
I have to give the government this reminder. Uh, Mr. Tommy Chong's idea is right. You should conduct undercover operation, and you, you have, uh, the, and offenders are smart in finding loopholes and ways to circumvent, uh, the system. I hope the government will seriously consider such views. Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak? Uh, Ms. Ann Jiang. Chairman, uh, give me a second.
Chairman, I didn't make any preparation to speak on this debate. Uh, some DAB members and pro-establishment members have already spoken, or our position is, uh, very clear. I believe the officials, the secretary have received such views, and they understand our worries. So why am I speaking now? This bill prohibits the sale of liquor to minors, those under eighteen years of age. And now we are speaking on amendments, uh, to clause seven, which would involve inspection by the officers in domestic premises. So this will affect thousands upon thousands of domestic, uh, dwellings. This would have, have a bearing on the well-being of our younger generation, and also for people who's, who keep liquor, uh, in their homes, and also whether they would be harassed, uh, because they have children there. This is a livelihood issue. Chairman, all the, uh, members from the opposition camp have remained silent, apart from Mr. Chan Chi Chin, who spoke this morning on this bill. And, uh, he has said something very consensus and reasonable. I, for a moment, thought that he was from the pro-establishment camp, and he was one of us. No, but, uh, anyone who, uh, raised this bill would think that, uh, we have to do the right thing. But the opposition camp, uh, are, are absent. They're not attending our meeting. Are they still, uh, in a meeting to talk about who should represent them to stand, to run for the election, or are they talking about Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, or Plan D? Well, you have been elected to speak for the public here. When they see a bill which may affect the general public, you should speak. Well, they were here, but they, they are not speaking, and they have left. So next time, how, how can people elect you to, to, to come back? How can we, people support these, uh, legal members? Uh, let's return to this bill. Uh, Secretary, I will speak on this bill, and then I will talk about the amendments to clause seven. But this bill is a belated bill, Secretary. I've checked the records. Many advanced economies and countries have got legislation to prohibit the sale of liquor to those under eighteen years of age. In other, in foreign countries, in the supermarkets, the rules are clear. No one under eighteen would, uh, be sold, uh, any liquor. So why, uh, years ago, when we enacted the existing legislation, we only prohibited the sale of liquor to minors in bars and restaurants? Why, why didn't we prohibit the sale of liquor, uh, by restaurants, bars, and convenience stores back then? I've checked the, uh, past records. Well, they did consider the issues that we are now considering, and that is, how are you going to regulate the, uh, sale in, uh, foreign countries? Minors who are under eighteen cannot purchase liquor, but we know, uh, during festive, uh, occasions and holidays, uh, young people, uh, drink a lot. The one who is eighteen and a half, uh, will be responsible for the purchase. I'm over eighteen. I will go to buy, uh, one box after another box of, uh, of liquor for other young people who stay outside the premises of the shop. I once was in Quebec. I saw, uh, people outside a shop, uh, responsible for the transporting the liquor, who are twelve or thirteen, and they would drink on the street because they dare not, uh, drink at home because their parents would know. So this is belated. Secondly, uh, the regime is not really, uh, comprehensive. But of course, there's, there are always, uh, pros and cons when we enact legislation. But overall speaking, this is a piece of, a good law. As Mr., uh, Dr. Elizabeth Quo has said, drinking, uh, is detrimental to young people. It will harm their liver, or there will be, uh, serious, uh, consequences and side effects. Uh, we have a different, uh, diseases of, for the liver, uh, such as liver cancer arising from, uh, heavy drinking. So, uh, the bill, uh, is a potter. Uh, Ms. Jiang, Ms. Jiang, I know, I know. I'm about to, uh, talk about clause seven. And let me finish the, uh, we should make it difficult for, for, uh, young people to buy liquor. I met people from Mother's Choice. It said that, uh, underage pregnancy is usually caused by the drinking. And I've talked to Mr. Chan Chi Chin about the high preference, uh, rate of AIDS. He said that, uh, after drinking, especially young men, fails, failed to, uh, do the precaution after drinking. Uh, they, they've, in that, they failed to protect themselves. Now, on clause seven, allowing the inspectors to enter domestic premises. Uh, many members have commented on this amendment. How do you apply for a search warrant from a magistrate? Are you going to tell the magistrate that I suspect that on the, on a certain floor, there's a family living there, and, uh, it's expected that, uh, uh, liquor is, uh, supplied to minors in the, in the premises? Well, you have to add due sufficient grounds, even if, uh, there's a suspicion. So you have to tell them the grounds. Well, you may say that we have received, uh, no, uh, information, or, or we, or people have seen the minors going in and out of the premises. Would that be sufficient grounds to apply for a search warrant to enter the domestic premises? So in that case, if a family keeps liquor, it could be one of the grounds to, to support the suspicion. Or if a family has, uh, minors, my, uh, children, and if their classmates visit the child frequently, people might suspect that the liquor selling is taking place in the home. And even if you successfully, uh, get a warrant and enter the premises, and you find a large amount of liquor, you cannot, still cannot prove, uh, the, uh, your case that liquor is illegally sold to minors, but you have, maybe you can see the books, the accounts, uh, with an entry saying that, uh, a certain amount of liquor is sold to minors on a certain date. But I suspect that they won't, uh, record the, the name or the date of birth of the minor concerned. So all you can do is, uh, say, is to say that they sell liquor illegally. But there are already laws to cover illegal sale of liquor. Therefore, in my view, uh, the amendment to, uh, clause seven in this regard is, uh, superfluous because we have already got, uh, provisions to govern, to regulate illegal sale. So, uh, if you sell liquor in domestic premises, uh, you have violating other laws such as, uh, the, uh, the land use, and also the operating a business without the requisite license, and, uh, is already against the law. We have already got that, um, covered by law. And now you are making it, uh, more difficult for yourself by, uh, introducing this amendment. Even if I support you this time, three years later, I will ask you, uh, for the number of successful prosecution. I can tell you that it's certainly going to be zero. No successful case can be made. You might be able to prosecute some of them, but, uh, you need evidence. You may not be able to secure any conviction. Uh, maybe you can have a undercover agent to, who's under six, sixteen, try, trying to buy. If, uh, that the, uh, under sixteen, uh, person is already on the premises, there's no need to have a search warrant for entry. Uh, Chairman, yes, we should enact laws to protect the community, to protect our young people. But, uh, we just don't see that this is going to be effective. Uh, the amendment is not going to achieve any, uh, result. It's difficult to enforce. And it's going to, uh, be a nuisance to many people. We have two point eight million families in Hong Kong. Uh, this is going to be a nuisance to these families. Who, who doesn't have one or two bottles of liquor at home? At least, uh, you, you, you have a can of beer, right, Mr. Siu Kafai? And, uh, for Secretary, uh, do you have any liquor? Well, you don't drink, but you have rice wine for, for cooking, right? Let's check your refrigerator. You may, you, you have some liquor, uh, rice, uh, wine included. And even for, uh, a tonic wine, young man should, uh, you may have some, uh, if you are an elderly person. So if it's not really, uh, feasible to, to enforce it, uh, we might as well do away with it. It can happen to any family. You may be under suspicion, and people can get a search warrant to, to conduct the, uh, search. Who would like to subject yourself to such a process? No, no one. I support the bill, Chairman. But for the amendment, this amendment to clause seven, uh, I, uh, spoken, uh, a lot about my worries. I hope, uh, in a moment, the secretary can respond to our views. Or maybe you can tell us how serious the current situation is, and how many prosecutions do you expect? So I submit.
Mr. Peter Shou. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yesterday I spoke twice on the bill. I represent the wholesale retail sector, so I represent, um, uh, operators selling liquor. Now, this bill is about prohibiting sale of liquor to, um, minors. So shops, shopper, uh, the shop operators said they all for it because they've been doing it in the past with a voluntary code. So they just want us to tell you that they don't object to this bill. But then, when it comes to the actual enforcement, would there be some problems? So I'd like to spend some time on that, so, uh, members have a better picture. Now, let's say after the bill is passed into law, and then someone go to a convenience store or shop to buy liquor, frontline staff will certainly feel some pressure. Now, the boss may know the law well, but we're talking about frontline staff who are just part-timers probably, and that is someone, um, or intoxicated, and, um, they may look seventeen or eighteen, you don't know, because young people these days are rather tall. And if, um, then the shopper, um, uh, uh, assistants, uh, refuse to sell liquor, then it could cause a dispute. Now, um, the law says there should be a prescribed notice. Now, on that notice, can I suggest that apart from saying that liquor must not be sold to people under eighteen, uh, can there also be a statement to say that, or disclaimer that, uh, the frontline, uh, uh, these staff, if they choose to sell liquor to you, they may become criminally liable? So that will strengthen the, uh, frontline staff's case not to sell alcohol to young people. No, but the, the young people say, because I, I, I won't get prosecuted, so I still want to buy. And, and if, if, uh, uh, young, young people then argue with the staff, but then the staff can point to the notice and say, well, if I sell to you, I may be punished for that. And hopefully then, uh, young people will be a bit more understanding. Publicity, I mentioned that yesterday. The government has so much money, please, um, do publicity on newspapers, TV, radios, and tell, uh, young people they cannot buy liquor from, uh, shops, and then shops cannot sell liquor to them. So young people won't make life difficult for the, the shop staff. So the government should do a bit more publicity. Now, um, actually, all forms of alcohol, including cooking wine, would be covered. And, um, these products are not sold at, um, uh, convenience store probably, but rather at emporiums and also at, uh, you know, these, um, small shops or stores in the wet market. Uh, there may be some grannies selling rice wine for cooking, and these, um, grannies can't even speak, um, Cantonese properly. How are you going to tell them they can't sell wine to people under eighteen? How are you going to tell them they can't sell wine to people under eighteen? So we're not talking about an easy task with publicity. How are you going to reach out to these grannies and tell them they can't sell wine to those under eighteen? So would the FHD visit all markets? And if you see that some of these store operators are selling wine, then you give them the prescribed notice to put up. Now, remember, these stores take up little space and you they put dry mushrooms everywhere. The whole store is packed with goods they sell and there's nowhere actually to put up a notice. So what are you going to do? Or are you saying that they should put up a label on that particular product? When you remember these stores are small in size? And how other than putting up notice, how are you going to explain to grannies about what they should do? So you need to go to each and every market and tell them and remind them. Otherwise, you may end up taking a granny to jail. You know, this will be a major issue when it happens, you know, you know that. It's the case in Hong Kong. So it's not easy at all. Now, distribution online. At the bills committee meetings, there was much discussion and you have responded with some improvements. That is, you accept people could take online to declare if he's eighteen or not. But let's say I have a mobile app. I buy from a particular chain store, buy groceries. But so there's not much of a likelihood that people just buy wine because supermarkets won't deliver just if you're buying some alcohol. Usually, you have to buy a certain quantity of goods before the supermarket will deliver to you. So you won't just buy a beer or two. So we're talking about a huge quantity of products. Let's say a family spends a few hundred dollars for all the week's groceries and among them, there's some liquor. And then the groceries are then delivered to someone's home. And now you say you have to check whether the recipient is over eighteen or not. Now, it's the parents who order the goods and how do we educate them? Maybe it's not just about putting up a label. It's about educating people in a particular media to tell them that you have to make sure the parents are there to take delivery. What if the delivery is done and then the parents are out? It's just a fourteen year old son there doing his homework and then he opens the door. He takes delivery and it so happens there is beer among the groceries. So what should the delivery staff do? If the delivery staff just hand over the groceries to the son, then he could be arrested. That is, if this person is directly employed by the supermarket. Now, he arrives and he sees the recipient is actually a child. Won't he be arrested? Because it's not right, right? The person who takes delivery should be over eighteen, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. Otherwise, I would have, that means I've got the whole concept wrong about this bill. So there's no adult there and that the delivery staff still leaves behind the goods and is against law. Mister Peter Shu, may I remind you? What you're saying is departure from clause seven amendment. You could speak on whether you support the bill or not as a whole in the third reading. Now, I'm just trying to quote some examples. I'll be quick. That is, if the person doesn't leave behind groceries and who's going to pay again for the delivery? So for operators, we're talking about huge costs involved. So we need to pay attention to that. Now, this is not a political issue. So that's why our members participate in debate. Just we just want to see whether something is reasonable or not, especially about entry into domestic premises. Many members spoke on it. Yesterday, I already said that during the course of scrutiny, your colleagues told me, even this morning, your colleagues called me and tried to state your case. But having heard Mister Tommy Jung and other members, it seems that what they say makes sense. From yes, last night to this morning, most members who spoke gave those arguments. Now, we're talking about going to someone's home. It's a private home. It's not like when you go to a shop, a convenience store, or a supermarket to buy things, then I can get it. But you're talking about people going to going to someone's home with a search warrant. Now, can you really catch those responsible? Let's say you managed to get a search warrant. You've been tipped off perhaps and you know someone sell liquor from that apartment and then you go there with a search warrant and you it takes time for people to open the door. Do you think the children will still be holding bottles of liquor in their hands? Because by the time they come and set the door, they may have put away everything. You won't be able to catch, say, young children selling alcohol there. So the chance of the happening is low. You won't catch people unless you're doing a test purchase. You know, as you ask a child who may look big, who may look eighteen, but he's actually sixteen and then you ask him to go to buy liquor from the unit and then they open the door and whatever. So let's say you have someone who looks big, who looks at his about eighteen when he's just seventeen, say. And if you can go into the home, then you can have a colleague accompany this minor because he can be just a friend and then immediately you can catch the people in the middle of the transaction. So there's no need for a search warrant. Now, some members question whether there could be a loophole. My assistants kept asking me to the whether there could be a loophole. Then maybe everybody will start selling liquor from domestic premises. Yes, that's a possibility. I don't rule it out. But then we have to consider also the privacy of the citizens. And just because you suspect someone selling alcohol at home and then you can go into the home, then people become concerned. Now, it's like legislating for Article twenty-three. Some say that if there's this legislation, then people can bust into your home anytime to arrest you. That's why people become so scared. That was one of the reasons that people became so concerned that you could just come into my home anytime. So that caused alarm. Maybe Mrs. Yip would correct me in a moment. But anyway, at the time, that's what many people in the community thought was the case. Anyway, I stand to be corrected. I'm just saying that Hong Kong people care very much about the privacy, especially privacy at home. You can check shops, no one mind. You want to protect young people from drinking, fine. But if now we tell you we can come to your home anytime because you keep liquor at home. You know, some people keep expensive bottles of wine too, maybe not even expensive bottles of wine. Many people probably keep some beer at home or some old bottles at home. And then people may think, well, so there's a chance you might come busting into my home. So they're worried. And that's why it's controversial. So secretary, give it some thought. I said, I made my point yesterday. Unless in a moment you're going to convince all of us with some strong arguments, otherwise I think I'm going to vote against this amendment. Thank you. Doctor K K Quo.